Okay, 5 o'clock, March 8, 2021, following the meeting to order, Granby Planning Board. Okay, first, first item, agenda, Bills.
I don't think we have any. Do you have any in the folder?
That's what I'm looking for. I'm just trying to double check, see anything. Okay, nothing here. Do we have some minutes to approve?
Yep, February 22nd, and I have a change.
Okay.
On page five of the small novel, the section titled Community, One Stop For Growth, should read Mass DOT, Route 202 Resurfacing and Related Work.
And is there, are there any other changes to the?
Not, not that I, ooh, Bob, yes.
Yeah, page three, second bullet from the bottom. Uh, Robert Sheehan Jr. Asked, what is the typical procedure? Who makes the decision first? Planning Board or Conservation Commission? It should be Planning Board or Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, got it. Good catch.
Are you any other changes recommended?
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Board minutes for Monday, February 22nd, 2021, as amended.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Jason, second. Any further? Okay. Bob.
Aye.
Lillian.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Aye. Jim's an aye, motion carries. Okay. We've got some time between now and the hearing. So, um, I had a couple acts from our last meeting. One was to talk with Town Council in regards to the addition and the existing, uh, site plan approval, area where the bike shop is, um, considering. He says, within the Planning Board's discretion to waive or remove conditions without hearing. The, um, the discussion of it already being approved and stuff, business, it's already allowed, um, the, the board could just additions if they seem to do so. What's the other thing? Um, the other thing I'll bring up, open the, uh, hearing. And then the other thing was, uh,
Jim?
Yeah.
You were breaking up. Um, I didn't catch all of what you said before. So somebody's got their, their, uh, mic on and they're moving things around. So it's cutting you out.
Alright, sorry. So I, I talked to Town Council about the bike shop, the proposed, uh, space they're looking to move to. And he said it was within the Planning Board's, uh, right to, to, uh, remove conditions if they, uh, deemed so. They can waive certain items if they, if they deem that it was necessary, uh, to do so without a hearing. The area was already zoned for business, so businesses, um, are allowed there. The, the use isn't, is, um, similar to what was, what's, what's there now or was previously, uh, approved. And the other thing he brought up, which we've had some discussion about this, we don't necessarily have to do in a butters list and have a hearing if it's by right. It's a, it's a simple, it's, it's within our bylaws, but it, he's, he, he made mention some of these things we may want to take a, a look at. And I think I had that conversation, or, or Ken brought it up, that typically towns don't have hearings for site plan approvals if it's allowed within that zone. It's usually when it's a, when it's a special permit or it's outlined in the, in the, uh, the bylaw. So we may want to think about that. Ken, can you, can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. Um, yeah, you're, you're, the, the attorney is correct, and that has always kind of been, um, my, um, understanding of site plan review, um, because your, your attorney and I think the board has acknowledged that site plan review in Granby, because it's written in your bylaw to suggest it follow the same process as a special permit, um, can be, um, separated from that aspect. So removing the aspect of requiring it to go under the same process of a butter notification being posted in the newspaper, doesn't need to occur unless it's obviously attached to a special permit. However, things like, um, this particular business, which is allowed by right with a site plan review, um, would, you know, go through a, um, a, a meeting process, but wouldn't necessarily need to have the additional costs, to the applicant for public notification and, um, you know, setting up a public hearing. So, so yes, you, you can, and the board can explore, and I, I'd be happy to help explore, um, removing the site plan review process from a public hearing process as it currently is listed in your, um, bylaw.
But how would, uh, any butters even know what's going on and voice their opinion? You're saying just because it's allowed, it doesn't matter. It's, it's in a business zone, and because it's a business, doesn't matter what it is, it's allowed? And we shouldn't, there really shouldn't be any questions from the butters?
Um, you're right, and that's probably one of the shortcomings about the process. Um, in, in chapter 40A, site plan review is silent on that aspect of, the process by which to notify a butters or notify, um, interested parties, um, like a special permit would. But, um, you know, I think the way that other communities have explored site plan review is, and their stance on it has been because it is, it isn't allowed use with site plan review in a, a zoning district that, um, you know, going through a review process at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting, um, would be sufficient. Um, and, you know, the notification, if you had a, 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 um, an applicant that wanted to be, um, be proactive in, in going to his or her neighbors, um, they could do that. But, um, you're right, Lil, that the, that, that's silent. It's, it's not, it's not a, um, something that normally has been, no, a butters normally wouldn't be notified in the case of a site plan review if, if that's the way it's listed in your zoning bylaw.
Well, the other, let me just send for a minute, Ken. The other thing is, let's say it's, it's, um, Dollar General, it's the new facility, the site plan approval require approval for storm, so on and so forth. What, what, that is, that is, Dollar General goes out of business, Abashon Hardware wants to come in, it wouldn't need another site plan review. Similar business, it's gonna, it's gonna work within the same con, you know, confines of the, of the existing building. That, that's what I'm, if, if it's a new, it's a new, new facility, a new, a new build, it would obviously need site plan approval for several. But for something that's already been approved, as long as the new tenant or the new owner works those conditions, then it shouldn't require one of them. That clarified a bit, that, that.
Yes, and that's understandable, yes.
Well, I didn't get what you just said. Jim, you're difficult too. There's, well, almost like an echo.
I know.
Is it, is it? Okay, everybody else is getting that as well?
Yep.
Okay.
Jim, you wanna, wanna explain it again? I will mute, uh, so only you and you and Bob will be unmuted.
Okay. So, so, so basically what I'm, what I'm saying is if Dollar General went through a site plan approval, even though it was in a business district and it was allowed, it still requires a site plan approval because it's stormwater, it's, it, you know, it's, uh, building size and so on and so forth, parking. But once it's been approved, then if, if Dollar General moves or goes out of business and an Abashon Hardware or another similar business was gonna move in there, as long as they didn't require additional parking or anything, they wouldn't need a, a special permit or a, a full site plan approval through a, through a hearing process. It's already been approved. It's already got plenty of parking for that type of facility, that type of building. It's got sufficient, um, handicap. You know, they wouldn't need, uh, uh, in a butters list and go through that whole process. It's just another tenant moving into a, a building with a similar service and working within the confines of what was allowed, based on site plan, based on structure, based on parking allowed. So that, that, that's, that's what I'm saying. If it's a new facility, or if it's a big change of use, let's, let's say it was gonna be something, it's loud in the business, but it's, but it's on the, uh, a total change of use, then it would require a, 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 a site plan, maybe not necessarily in a butters list, but it would still need a site plan, making sure it, it, um, the use changed. And then we could determine on that point, well, you know what, this uses, we, we probably need a hearing to get it, get the butters to see how it's gonna affect it, you know, something that's much more, uh, much more evasive or, or, or something along those lines that would, that would create more of a, uh, a nuisance of some sort. You follow, you follow what I'm saying?
So, but, so basically you're saying if a, if a, a different business moves into an existing location, and really the only thing that's gonna change is signage, there's no need to go through these, uh, rudimentary hoops that we've been jumping through, or we could potentially jump through.
Correct. It doesn't, it shouldn't, it's already been approved. Why go, why go through the process and, and advertise it? It's been approved once. I'm trying to come up with an example of something that, um, would be, I don't know, I can't, I can't think of, uh, well, I'll.
Let's say, let's say Dollar General, uh, decided to sell their building and a, uh, sports bar wanted to move in there. That's something that would require, at least in my eyes, a public hearing, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that would. Yes, that would be a, or, or if it was gonna be a, the drive, right? That would require a site plan.
If it was gonna be a what?
Say a restaurant with a drive-through, that would require alterations, would require a site plan approval. Okay. If it's a, if it's a, if it turns into being a, like you said, some sort of a, uh, a bar or something, maybe, maybe then it would require a, a special permit, if it was gonna be something like, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, I don't think it would require a special permit because it's allowed. It would just require a site plan approval.
Right. Your, your bylaw does offer the criteria by which you could waive all the requirements of your approval of a site plan review. It suggests in section 6.3, that the section, um, that up to, I think it's 25%, um, if there's a, if there's an exterior change of up to 25%, less than 25%, the Planning Board may, um, waive some or all of the requirements of the approval. So there is the criteria that the, and usually I think what happens is the zoning enforcement officer, you saw your building inspector, if an applicant wanted to come and, um, you know, uh, try to figure out how they could get that particular business or property, um, permitted for whatever use, would get their clarity from, or clarification from the zoning enforcement officer. Um, and oftentimes, then the zoning enforcement offer, what's, officer would say, the Planning Board should make this decision because, you know, the, the opinion of the zoning enforcement officer is that it's more than 25% exterior, you know, or some sort of change, if it's a use change, or if it's a change to the exterior of the building, as your bylaw suggests, so.
Okay, well, we could come back to that later if we, we want more discussion on it, but we're at the, the, just past the 5:15 point here for the, the hearing.
We need a motion to close the regular meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the Planning Board meeting so we can open the public hearing. And at the completion of the pub, public hearing, we will reconvene the Planning Board meeting.
Okay. I've got 5, 5:18, March 8, 2021. Continue hearing. The nature of the hearing is to consider the petition of John Plachek.
Yeah. Do we have a second to Bob's motion?
I'll run in a second.
I'm second, okay.
All in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lil?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Okay, now it's 5:19. Uh, opening the, the hearing, the nature of the hearing is to consider the petition of John Plachek, applicant and owner seeking site plan approval under section 6.3 of the Granby zoning bylaws applicable to section 3 regulations, 3.7.5 accessory uses regarding a private garage or stables exceeding 1,200 square feet in area for a, a detached garage for lobby storage at 10, or at 107R Carver Street, Granby, Mass. Okay. I thought I saw something this week that there was a request to continue this by the applicant?
Yes, he requested a continuation until March 22nd as, uh, he's meeting with Conservation tomorrow. Now, at the same time, he already met with Zoning Board of Appeals.
Correct.
And they denied it. So the question becomes, do we even need to do anything?
At this point, probably not, but I think it would be in our best interest to accommodate the, the request to continue. And let's get some more information. Because if there's, I mean, we, we really can't do anything with it because it hasn't been, it's, it's not allowed in the zone according to ZBA. So we, we, we couldn't vote on it tonight. Well, we could vote on it tonight, but I, I'm gonna recommend that we just continue it until after we hear what the outcome was from Conservation. That would be my recommendation, but I'll take a motion.
I'm, I'll make a motion to continue 107R, uh, hearing until March 22nd at 5:15.
Okay, I'll second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Lillian?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Motion. Okay, so we're gonna go regular, regular meeting agenda. Okay, so next comes to review submitted application for 17 Hubadlo Road, site plan approval to be able to begin hearing process. Has anybody looked at that?
Bob has. This is the old, uh, Lane Blacktop plant.
Correct, yep.
Which is now, whatever you, you, Yurvik Atlantic Construction. Uh, the sign in front of the, uh, at the street says Northeast Paving, but.
Okay, so.
The, the, the applicant name is different on the, uh, on the application.
Yeah. Um, so, my, uh, let me just see something here. So, so basically, part of that property is zoned industrial, and part of it is zoned residential. For some odd reason, but nonetheless, they're looking to put up a temporary structure to weather, to protect the, um, asphalt product, raw asphalt product before it's, before it's manufactured, so it doesn't get wet.
So we're gonna get, uh, something that shows where the stormwater runoff, seeing as you're right near that whole problem area? And I, are they putting this stuff on the ground? So is it gonna leach? I don't know what the raw product is.
Yeah, Jim, I'm wondering myself, where did you, uh, where did you get that information from? I didn't see that. It was probably Kathy sent us.
Yeah, one point was a conversation, they called me.
I see.
About it.
Am I able to interject? This is Charlie Ames from, uh, Northeast Paving.
Please do.
Yeah, good. So what we're looking to do is, is, is put up a shelter to cover the fine aggregate. So that would both be the sand that's already there on the ground, and also wrap, which is recycled asphalt. Uh, and, and the purpose of that is if we control the moisture in it, then it requires less energy to heat it in the, uh, the process, you know, in the manufacturing process. So saving energy, saving, you know, lessening the carbon, uh, uh, footprint somewhat for it. All these materials are there and already stored there, um, on the ground. Uh, and it, it, there's a site plan that shows it's tucked back towards the, more towards the landfill side of the property. Um, and so it's really not gonna change the, the, the flow of the water at all. It's a quantum hot type building other than, but it's a, a metal frame with the canvas or a, a tarp over it. So the rainwater that hits, it'll hit the ground, uh, around the building, and it'll follow the same pattern that it's, it's followed previously.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
I'd still like to see that on a drawing so that we can say, yes, we looked at it, and, and here's the official, um, official wording, official determination on it. Just to cover us.
Well, when you say drawing, you're talking about a, a surveyor's drawing? Is that correct? Not just this, uh, okay.
Yeah, something that'll show the actual stormwater, because you are adding, um, concrete blocks, if I, I noted it correctly for a base. And you've got the big hoop covering, so that's all gonna go. Is it gonna be all of a sudden? And you've got the big hoop covering, so that's all gonna go, is it gonna be all of a sudden, you're adding more water going somewhere?
Well, the, 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 the rainwater that hits the structure would have hit the ground there beside it, so, um, it, it, you know, it, it's, it's fifty-two by ninety-six, the, uh, the dimensions of the structure. So it's not adding any runoff per se because of the ground that it's on is, is, is on top of the, you know, I'm, I'm not certain that that would be pervious material anyways. You know, the, the, yeah, do you guys have access to this drawing that shows the location on the property? It's, it's, you know, it's surrounded by aggregates on all sides, so whatever hits that will run into, you know, run across the aggregate.
Ken, what's your thought?
I would, it doesn't, based on the, the drawing and based on, um, you know, what was submitted, it looks as if it's not necessarily going to be increasing any impervious surface due to the fact that this is being placed on, you know, I'm assuming, based on this picture, where if, if, as the gentleman suggested, if it was to rain on this at the moment with none, without this structure, it would follow the, the patterns of, you know, stormwater or how, how that water would leave the site. It's not, it's not being added to, let's say, in an additional area off the site or not being built, you know, outside of this footprint of this, um, impervious surface already. I, I mean, that's just my initial thought with regards to that. I, you know, I'm not, uh, an engineer, um, but with regards to understanding what I do, specifically with stormwater, it's normally when you are addressing any additional stormwater that should be reviewed, is, is, is specific to new, uh, to development, um, over areas that are not currently impervious. So the fact that this is being placed on top of, think of it as a, um, a parking lot, that presumably the, um, stormwater flow would be the flow as if the structure was not there. Um, but that's my take on it, that's my understanding of it.
So Ken, this would be no different than a, an existing paved parking lot and if somebody was gonna put a solar canopy over it? Is that, am I putting words in your mouth or is that a fair analysis?
That's, that's my kind of basic analysis of, um, putting structures over things that are already impervious. So, you know, whether or not it's solar panels or a canopy, um, that's my understanding with regards to the, the impacts of stormwater. But, yeah, um, you know, I think as the board has done in the past, and I'm, you know, unsure of, of, um, this particular location, if there's other permitting that, that's required, the board has asked for some sort of, um, letter similar to what occurred for one twenty-one State Street, for, uh, a, a letter from, uh, an engineer, um, a licensed engineer suggesting that the stormwater flow is not, you know, there's not gonna be an increase of stormwater or that, uh, you know, the, the current infrastructure that's in place in and, and around the site would be sufficient to handle, you know, any water coming from the site. Yeah, so I think, you know, understanding what I know, um, with regards to that type of development in addition to what the board has done in the past with some of these structures, which, um, these metal structures, you know, the board, uh, has asked for some sort of, um, determination of, impacts to stormwater for these large structures.
Okay, Ken, now, is this something that's gonna have to be sent out to review for, uh, by, uh, police, fire, board of health, uh, conservation commission?
Well, I think because this is submitted as a site plan review, um, your site plan review process does suggest that you, you send this off to the other, um, authorities and the other committees on town. Whether or not they have comments is, because it was submitted as a site plan review, I'm assuming the zoning enforcement officer, your building inspector had suggested this go under a site plan review process. Um, I'm, um, I'm curious as to, um, what the determination by the, by the zoning enforcement officer was with regards to this and, and how to get this permitted. That's normally, uh, a follow-up that I would do with the building inspector to ensure that it's going through the proper process. I don't think the board has ever seen this large of a structure, um, in my time with the board. And so I, you know, I think if there has been a determination by the zoning enforcement officer, we should know what the interpretation of the zoning and this particular plan was so that the planning board can act accordingly.
Okay.
Because this is an accessory structure, I don't know. Um, if that determination has been made, then, you know, does this require another special permit through the, the ZBA?
No, there's nothing on what we have that shows which way the water flows. So we don't know if it's flowing, uh, towards, um, the houses or which way. Mr. Ames, do you know?
Basically, the area where the, the, the tent is going to be is, is elevated there and it flows, down, uh, towards, I think, a good bit of it flows towards New Ludlow Road, um, on the, uh, landfill side of the property. And I believe some of it may, at that point, also flow towards the landfill on the, uh, um, you know, a- along their edge of the property there. You know, if you see the way the, the plant, the, the plant on the property's oriented, it, it's, to the best of my knowledge or the best of my memory, it would flow to the, uh, what direction is that, I believe to the north of the plant.
Northwest.
Northwest, yeah.
I'd be more concerned what was coming out of this.
I'm sorry, there was an echo there.
All right, so, so basically the board's asking for some sort of a, 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 a plan showing the, the flow, the direction of the, of the, uh, the water that's being shedded off this structure.
Okay.
And quite frankly, I, I think, um, I think it's a good idea that you're covering it, but not just for the purposes that you were saying, but also for any impurities that are in there that aren't getting washed out of the product, like they do with salt sheds. They mix, well, they cover them for, for good reason.
Yeah.
And that's another purpose that the, this, this shelter has. So if you, I, I guess it, we'll, we'll have to have a conversation with, with the code enforcement to see what his issues were. But from the board's perspective, like, they're just interested in seeing which direction that water's flowing.
Uh, yeah. I would, I would also like to throw out a cautionary note that, um, these are gonna, I'm assuming we're gonna send these to all the various related departments. I don't think that a public hearing should be scheduled until conservation has had a chance to meet on this. Uh, a lot of wetlands over there and I just have a, uh, a funny feeling that a vote on this could be held up by waiting for conservation to act. Uh, I'm just throwing that out. Obviously, we can continue public hearings, but just my two cents.
Well, I, I think the way we, we would do that, Bob, is, um, we circulate it, they get their allotted time to review it. And then if we get a letter from them with concerns, then, then we would act and address it. Wait for them.
Okay, but let's, let's, okay. But let's say we re, we do not receive a letter, uh, in a for, in the form of a yea or a nay. I don't wanna see us go to vote. And, uh, because conservation hasn't said anything, we end up in a, uh, um, a stalemate.
Well, now, I think we treat it the way we always do. It, it, it's no different than a, a subdivision. We approve the subdivision based on our purview and then it goes to conservation and they hold it up for some reason. That's, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, but you know where I'm coming from with the, uh, you know, conservation only meets once a month, unfortunately.
We have.
But fine. What's that?
Do we have some idea of the timeframe we're, we're, we're talking here? That, that, you know, that we're waiting for conservation?
That's entirely up to the, uh, conservation commission, Charlie.
Isn't there some defined period that's spelled out?
Not that I'm aware of.
Your site plan review, if that is the under, if that was the suggested pathway to getting this permitted by the zoning enforcement officer, does offer boards and committees thirty-five days to, um, review it when you've opened that meeting. So, um, presumably, if, you know, you use, take the next meeting to officially accept this application based on any additional information that may be forthcoming and/or understanding the pathway that the zoning enforcement officer has laid out for, um, this project, then presumably within those thirty-five days, um, and obviously, you know, we can, we can work towards making that efficient, um, that review efficient with conservation commission, to understand, you know, any impacts to the wetlands if there would be. But, but your, your zoning bylaw based on site plan review, um, does offer that thirty-five day period.
Yeah, I didn't speak to him directly, so, you know, I'll wait for, but it was my understanding that the zoning individual was, was seeking to know if the board would require this as site plan review. So maybe that's, it's just better to wait to hear, obviously, what his intention was then, I guess. So what you, I guess, what's my next step at that point?
I would recommend.
I don't know, I.
I would recommend that you file your application with the, with the site plan showing the, the, all the, the information that you've shown already, plus the, the board is requesting, uh, the, uh, an engine stamp showing on how the water's gonna flow from, from that structure. And then what we will do with it, once we receive it, we'll circulate it to the depart, to the department heads for review. And then we'll schedule our, we'll schedule the hearing, we'll schedule the hearing at the same time, hoping that we have everything back from from other department heads move this along fairly quickly.
And Mr. Ames, I noticed on the, um, application you sent in, it didn't have a date, so if you could just put that in and you didn't sign it either, so, uh, if you could do that, that would, uh, help alleviate any kinks along the way.
Okay. As soon, as soon as we get it, the clock starts ticking on your behalf, so you, if you're in a, in a, uh, position where you wanna get this done quickly.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess we misunderstood what the intent was initially from the, uh, the zoning board, I guess, or the zoning officer when he suggested this. I, I interpreted that this was a question if this was required, but it appears that it is, so we will, uh, proceed accordingly.
Okay. You have any other questions for us?
No, I don't believe at this time.
Well, wait, wait a minute, we don't, Charlie, we don't know that because we haven't talked to the zoning enforcement officer. We, we don't know why it was sent to us, so maybe we should find that out, it might, and maybe we can just make this go away at the next meeting. Is that a reasonable statement for the planning board to answer as well as Ken?
Well, I think some clarification from the zoning enforcement officer would be helpful in that if the intention was to go before the planning board, his citation or his letter, as the planning board has seen in the past, a determination from the zoning enforcement officer would provide the pathway to get that permitted. So if he cites a particular section of your zoning bylaw that suggests he needs to get a site plan approval for this type of use or a special permit, if, if that's required, that would be stated in a note to the applicant or to the, to the interested party. And then from that point, that, that party would file accordingly with the proper, with the proper, um, authorities, normally the planning board. So it, it could be that the determination is that, you know, he may need, um, Mr. Ames may need, uh, site plan review or the, or the zoning enforcement officer may say something else, I'm, I'm not quite sure. But, um, you know, I think that hopefully for Mr. Ames, this conversation has been helpful with regards to some of the site plan review criteria that the planning board may be looking at specific to additional stormwater and, um, some of the other items. But I think the determination from the zoning enforcement officer probably could be the, um, the first, kind of the first step to understand the, the pathway to get this permitted.
Okay. Is, is a building permit required for this? This is only a temporary structure, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's basically a big tent, you know, temporary's a relative thing, but it's, it's, it's essentially a big tent that's just set up to, you know, keep rainwater off.
Right. Okay, well, we'll wait to hear from the building inspe, uh, the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay. I appreciate everybody's time and, uh, I assume that he will convey that. I appreciate everybody's time, and I assume that he will convey that information to you, not to us?
Well, you can be included in, you can be CC'd on the letter.
Yep.
That way you know what he has to say.
Yep. I guess I should rephrase that. I, or, am I gonna prompt him to respond, or are you gonna prompt him to provide that letter?
Jim, how do you want to handle this?
I'm gonna contact Greg tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks so much.
Hey, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do I get out of this thing?
I ask myself the question many times. Okay, any updates on the bylaw zoning amendments?
I, I think as the board is aware, I misfiled the, the document before the select board. So the, the select board will be reviewing that memo at its March 22nd meeting, as I just learned today. After speaking to the chair, I do think that the planning board can still move forward with its public hearing, as Lil had suggested in a previous email, and that is scheduled for April 12th. I did provide to Lil, Kathy, and the chair, a public notice that can be posted accordingly. I'll have, I'll also have maps hopefully by the end of the week to, to have, so that Kathy can upload them to the town website so people are aware of the proposed changes.
I have a couple of questions. Do we wanna add to what we've submitted to the use table where it says no outdoor displays are allowed? Change it to be okay in general business, otherwise we may run, where automatically people are gonna be doing the wrong thing, violating it. We would still have time to add it to the select board stuff because they're not meeting till the 22nd.
I would recommend we hold on that, Lil. I think there's, there's a bunch of things with the hearings, the site. I think we should probably group that under another session next year or something. I mean, there's a lot more. Go ahead.
The other question is, we are going on the assumption that there's going to be a May annual meeting. Ken, I don't remember how long you said after we have public hearings that the actual meeting has to be held?
There's six months from the public hearing.
Okay, so we could still stay on our schedule that we have in case there is a May meeting, but it's, Jim, unless you can confirm with Chris Martin, it's not looking that, that good regarding to how many people are able to irrigate.
So you don't, you're hearing rumor that there's not going to be a May meeting?
I'm, I'm hearing rumors, but I don't know if you can get an answer out of Chris. It'll probably be up to the Board of Health and the CDC. You're not gonna wanna hold a May meeting outside. You're not gonna get hardly anybody there. It's a little cold then, still.
I'll have that conversation. If, if it looks like it's gonna get pushed way out, then maybe, then we can address these other items in a second public. The board chooses to do so.
Sounds good.
Okay. I'm wording upward, bike shop. So, as I started to explain before, that, speaking with town council, you know, those were conditions that the board can, can relieve the, the property with, as it doesn't pertain to the new, the new tenant. Seeing they were restrictive conditions, they don't, I don't even know why they ever put that on there. That was, made no sense to me, why you would, if it's a, it's a business zone, it's allowed to do business. Just didn't make any sense why that board did that. But anyway, I'm in favor of just lifting, taking a vote, lifting the two conditions that were on that site and allowing the bike shop just to move, to move in like they should be able to, as long as they operate that facility with the parking space and so on. For, outside the conditions that we're gonna lift. There was operating conditions, operating hours. Is there any other discussion on that piece?
Jim, I have a question. Why don't we just, well, let me back up. Does the site plan approval end if another business goes in and that person isn't there?
I don't know if I understand your question.
Well, they've got all these restrictions, and it probably would be easier to just do a whole new site plan approval and not put all those restrictions in there, because just about every single one of them applies to Lamro's business, like the height of mulch storage area, concrete blocks, you'd have to take that out too. You'd have to think about the storeroom garages to be used for repair and maintenance. You'd have to take out basically all six. And so why not just do either a whole new one if we have to do that, or does the whole thing end with that? And, and by the way, how many parking spaces are there, there? I've yet to see anything that's really designated a parking space.
The, the original site plan showed all the parking spaces there.
But we don't have that. We have a drawing. I don't know if that's supposed to be a site plan.
I don't have it.
It shows four bins, like where he's been keeping the, the things that were on the concrete block, and it shows the building. And it shows the one in the back. It doesn't show where any parking spaces are. Unless those four bins were supposed to be the parking spaces and they're not designated as such. They actually have sizes on them, on the drawing that I'm looking at.
I'm pretty sure that lot is, is painted, parking spaces are painted in there. But all that, everything that's in there is going away.
In where? On the outside?
On the outside.
Okay.
Blocks, that whole, that whole eyesore. I think, I think that the, those conditions were put in place specifically for what he was selling there. And, and they were trying to screen it from view from the public, because it was basically unsightly. That's why they didn't want the mounds going above the concrete block. Which I'm not so sure, which is worse to look at, the piles of mulch, the concrete block. So I'm, I'm in favor of just removing those conditions off of that, that were specific to land. Not allowing anybody, but I don't even know, how, how did that read though with, with somebody being in the building?
I got it right here. It says, no full-time employee at the building staff, only for appointments.
See, that, again, that, that to me falls outside of a, I don't even know how that can be in there or...
Right, but Ken, how, what happens to a site plan approval if another business comes in? Does that follow the business, or does that go away and?
With regards to site plan approval, you know, sometimes what ends up happening, and it's usually the determination of the zoning enforcement officer, whether or not a new site plan approval would be required. Where in the past, and I think Jim alluded to it earlier, with regards to, let's say, you know, a similar type store of Dollar General would replace Dollar General if Dollar General were to leave. That if the zoning enforcement officer, understanding that there were any additional improvements that needed to be made to that specific building, would, would cross any threshold of which there would be a requirement for site plan approval, then that would be the case. But normally, it would just require a building permit and/or certificate, certificate of occupancy that's issued by the building department if it was a similar type use.
Okay, but that doesn't answer the question, does a site plan approval follow, does it die and nothing applies when that business is out of there, or does it follow forever?
Well, it's curious, because normally with site plan approval and any conditions you would place on that, normally, normally it would be for that, you, for the person or for the entity that would be utilizing it, or that would be asking for permission from the planning board through site plan review. And so it would, would, would fall to that one applicant. Hopefully that answers it.
So, once he moves out of there, the site plan approval doesn't apply anymore?
I think the determination, again, it, it goes to the determination of the zoning enforcement officer for the next tenant, if that's the case. If there are going to be any departures from what initially was permitted, I mean, if it's strict to how, how, you know, the time that it was, that the business was open or any specific conditions of that approval, I think that it probably could be argued that that would be applicable to them. I don't think it's a blanket approval. I, yeah, I mean, I think that there would be some research done by either the, the next board and/or zoning enforcement officer to ensure that the similar type of use and, and business operation was the same as the previous tenant. If it happened to be a tenant that, you know, wouldn't, that, that follows right, you know, after that, the, the previous tenant has departed, you know, has left that space. I'm just thinking of like, you know, any sort of strip mall that has individual suites where, you know, you're gonna permit those types of uses usually in a site plan review or a special permit, if that's, you know, if that's required. But it would be applicable to the entire site. I think the, a determination of a future user of that, and whether or not that applicant would need to go through another review process would be determined.
So the, go ahead. The zoning, the, Greg Briggs is the one who decides if we should be looking at it?
I, what, and this is what I suggested to Mr. Ames, is that normally it's a zoning enforcement officer that would determine the pathway to get the item permitted. And so as I've seen in the past through some of the documents that Kathy has shared, is a memo from him that suggests that the applicant need to come to the planning board for this, or he can't issue a building permit because he needs the, the land use boards to approve what they need to approve. And this is specific, I think, to the oversized garage example. That those determinations do come from, or should, come from the zoning enforcement officer.
So Jim, what's your take on that?
So after giving it a little more thought, the conditions that were put on that site for, for the, the landscaping portion of it, was the planning board at that time, it's really not allowed, but we're gonna allow you to do it. If you're not storing bulk in the business. And I think they were stretching it by, well, we'll let you do it if you keep it covered, and it's only by appointment. Because our bylaws don't allow bulk storage of, of materials like that.
Right, so, so the question really comes down to Greg Briggs saying, well, looking at it now, is it a change of use, is it not? And if it's not, then we don't need to get involved. If it is, he needs to give us a letter saying why he thinks we need to get involved. And we are just kind of assuming that once Lamro gets out of there, that site plan approval doesn't apply anymore. That's my understanding. Am I out in left field without a glove here?
No, you're in left field, but I didn't mean, I didn't mean the way it came out, but what, what you're saying is that we, we don't do anything with this. I don't even know, unless Greg, Greg takes issue with it. Because it's allowed.
You know what, Jim, I, I think you're right. This decision that was handed down by the, uh, planning board back, trying to find it here, uh, in
2006.
2006, was site-specific to Sean Lamro. Lamro Landscaping. So now the building is gonna change. It's by right in the business zone. And it is not a similar business to what Lamro Landscaping did, and maybe it just goes away.
Because I'll tell you what, you, you go across the street to where Dunkin' Donuts is. And Verizon moves in, or AT&amp;T moves in, they're just gonna issue them, there's no reason not to.
That's right.
And I don't know why this would be treated any different other than the bike guy.
Now, oh. We also gotta look at this too. Is the, who, who's gonna own the building? Are the Lamros still gonna own the building? Do we know that?
I don't know as if the Lamros do own the building. I don't know if they're a tenant or an owner.
Oh, okay. Because where I was reading with that point was, if they own the building, if Lamro owns the building, and the gentleman from the bike repair decides that he wants to close shop, this order of conditions, or however you wanna term it, Uh, it should stay in place if if the Lameros would like to in the future.
No, it goes away.
Reopen.
No, it goes away after two years.
Okay, okay.
Like a.
Go ahead.
It would be pre-existing non-conforming. Once it, once a building goes away for, an occupant goes away if it's a special permit. Which this sounds like it was more like a special permit because it was allowing something that's not allowed in that zone. It goes away.
So this site plan approval has a two-year limit. Is what you're saying.
Once it stops operating, yes.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about that, then it sounds like it's all the building inspector and he's the one that has to do the determination, not us.
Otherwise, we wouldn't see it unless they were putting. They're looking for an occupant, let's say for, uh, where where Matt, the bike store is coming out of, right? And now they're going to put in a, I don't know. Fifty-seat coffee shop compete with Dunkin' Donuts. Well, he may say they're they don't have enough parking for that. It's going to need, he doesn't believe they do. He's going to require a site plan approval to see if the the parking meets the building occupancy. I'm just using that. That may be a poor example. Then he'd say, go get a site, make sure there's you've got ample parking and access.
Right.
But it still comes down to, we don't do anything until it's referred to us by Greg Briggs.
All for that.
Now, was was this referred to us by Greg or was this merely a, uh. A business owner asking what needs to be done?
Good question.
Pat, are you out there?
It doesn't look as if he's here.
Yeah, he's not signed in.
Well.
So so is the consensus of the board that? Well, no, we don't even know if Greg Briggs has privileged any of this information at this time. I was going to say is, uh, should we ask Greg to, uh. You know. Request that we do something, but it doesn't sound like he even knows, so. Uh.
I'm going to call him tomorrow.
And then the gentleman. The gentleman with the bike shop, the gentleman with the bike shop, as far as right now, unless I'm convinced otherwise. Fine, let him move in. The only thing he's going to have to deal with the planning board is potentially signage. And then the building inspector will say, gee, your sign is too big, you can appeal this. And we will get a notification from the building inspector saying, uh, sign permit, permit denied, too large. And he comes to us. And that may not even happen. He may be fine with the, uh, with the sign bylaws that we have in place.
He alluded at the last meeting, he would stick within the bylaws for the sign.
Okay.
I'm going to call Greg tomorrow. I'll get clarification.
Are you going to ask him if he reviewed the request at all?
Yep.
Okay, so we will wait to hear from them.
Well, is there any way we can expedite this? I I guess we can't because we don't know what the answer is from Greg, but, uh.
But I'm going to find. What I'll find, Greg Bob is. Was was he approached for a. For certificate of occupancy to operate?
Okay. And if not.
Then I'll call, I will call Matt, as he's been calling me almost weekly to get a status. I will call Matt and refer him to the building department to go get his certificate of occupancy. And if Greg doesn't take issue with it, and I do it.
So really, with with all of these sort of things, we shouldn't be doing anything until we have a letter from zoning enforcement saying, you know, something's wrong here and here's why I'm, you need to go see the planning board. Correct?
Correct.
That way we at least have a a little chain there showing how everything started and why we haven't.
Yep. Okay. I had another action item to contact Dave DeRosa about the the, uh, the LT project 202. Everything he's got, everything he has is like 10 years old. It's all old. He's got, he doesn't have any for us to reference. So I don't know where we could re, we probably already passed. But, um. What's what section was it again? That they were asking us to review?
Down by School Street intersection.
Yeah, Kendall Street to School Street. And there was any, um, any date to respond to them in their letter. But if they had any questions, we, there's a phone number and an and an email. Susan MacArthur.
I tried calling the phone number. It was the, uh, it was, uh, the signup for COVID vaccines.
Really?
No, I'm only kidding.
So at this point, seeing we don't have anything to review. I know they're putting a roundabout. They're putting sidewalks in, I'm told, on both sides of the street. I think it's good to have the sidewalks down by the school for all the kids that walk to school.
Jim, do you want me to contact this Susan MacArthur? See if we can get. No?
No, I don't. You want me, you asking me to contact her?
No, I'm asking if you want me to contact her.
Oh. Oh, absolutely, if you if you if you want.
I'll see if she can get us something a little more detailed showing what they're going to be doing or point us to someone who might have the latest drawings because how can we comment on something when we what they're doing?
Right. Who did they send that to? Was it, did that letter come from the select board?
It went to the select board with copies to all of the departments, conservation, border health, highway, and us.
Copies of the the plan?
No copies of the letter and the, um, photograph of a map they have is the location of the stuff.
I don't recall seeing anything on that.
I can see you. The letter is dated January 19th.
Will, could you send me that as well? I'd be interested in seeing the what appears to be the minimal amount of stuff.
I can.
Thank you.
All right. You have anything else?
Um, do you want to go through the, uh. Action item list?
Sure.
We answered just about everything already.
Take it off the. The action item list then, can't we?
Okay, so the first thing was send a copy of the Nexamp letter to you, and I did that. Did you contact that lady? That was on the billing for, uh, you were supposed to contact Jamie Stanton from Nexamp.
I told her the letter was in route.
Okay, so you're done. Check is in the mail. Um, Jim, you were supposed to inform Chris Martin of the decision not to respond regarding AJ Autobody.
Correct. I left him a message last week.
You left him a note or a voicemail or?
I left him a voicemail.
Okay. And this one is done. Talk to town council as to what process we need to go through to allow. This was the the map thing. So that's completed. Um, obtained detailed plans for the proposed mass DOT work. We'll call that completed. Actually, we will reassign that to me. For the next. I figured you would. And Ken, you were to send in the proposed bylaws, zoning and bylaw amendments, and that's completed. To the select board. Done. Woo-hoo. So next meeting, we have the continuation of the 107 R Carver Street public hearing.
Correct.
And that's it, right? And anything else that comes up?
Correct. I would say so.
Okay. I'm done.
The only, the only potential changes is after my phone call, uh. Riggs. That we we add. We add to the agenda on the. For both the asphalt plant and. The bike shop.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything? Bob?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'll. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to to adjourn.
One second.
I'll second.
Jason seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Elliot?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim is an aye. Thanks, everybody.
Hey.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.